All right. Good evening and hello, everyone. Those of you out there, those of you calling in, people on my Zoom screen, all of you watching the replay that we are recording right now. Welcome to the first ever Boulder City Council Candidate Cycling Forum. I'm Tila Duhaime. I will be facilitating this forum tonight. I serve as the Chair for Boulder's Transportation Advisory Board, but tonight I'm just myself as a citizen, and a cyclist, and a voter. Next slide, please. It is Tuesday, October 26th. Ballots are out. And the last day of vote is next Tuesday, November 2nd. Now, we are joined tonight by candidates for Boulder City Council, as well as an impressive roster of cycling experts on the local and national stage. We'll get to them in a second. But first, let's talk about you, the audience, and why we are all here today. Next slide. Boulder is a cycling city, and lots of us use and rely on bikes on a regular basis, directly and indirectly. We are road and mountain bikers, yes, but we're also parents, we're friends and spouses of cyclists, we're advocates, environmentalists, sometimes we're critics, and we're financial supporters of local cycling organizations. But more to the point, we represent thousands and thousands of voters who want action on some key areas of concern affecting cyclists in our community. All of us have a stake in electing leaders who pay attention to those values because we will be entrusting them to make policy that affects us every day. Tonight is an opportunity for the candidates to go on record about how they will act to protect us, to support cycling in the future, and to measure up to the community's expectations around cycling. I do want to take a moment to thank the organizers of this event tonight. First of all, a huge thank you to Boulder Mountain Bike Alliance. You can find them at bouldermountainbike.org. The Boulder Mountain Bike Alliance's mission is to serve as a positive voice for mountain biking in the greater Boulder, Colorado area by improving the trail experience for all users through group rides and events, advocacy, and trail building. BMA has over 1,300 members and 40 business partners. Next, Community Cycles has been a key organizer for tonight's event. Drop by the shop at 26th and Spruce, or at communitycycles.org. Community Cycles gives used bikes a new life, providing no- and low-cost bicycles to thousands of our community members every year. We provide education on bike safety and repair, and advance the cyclist's agenda at the level of planning and policy, working to make a better Boulder for people who ride bicycles. We have over 2,000 members, 20 employees, hundreds of volunteers, and community partners. Our third major contributor this evening has been Cyclists for Community at cforcommunity.org. They are responsible cyclists who lead and partner with our communities to develop safety, educational, philanthropic, and social initiatives and programs to create a positive experience for all users of our roads and bikeways. I'd also like to extend a thanks to the members and supporters of these vital local organizations. We can't do it without all of you. Now, let's meet our candidates. Next slide. We are joined tonight by Matt Benjamin, Michael Christie, Jacques Tacallo, Lauren Fulkerts, Steve Rosenblum, Nicole Spear, David Takahashi, Dan Williams, and Tara Wiener. Unfortunately, Mark Wallach is unable to be here tonight because he's right this minute at the City Council meeting. As most of you know, he's a sitting City Council member. He's running for reelection, but he has provided a lengthy statement on the themes that we'll be covering tonight. BMA will be posting his statement on their website, as well as links to resources and a video from tonight after the forum concludes. Now, let's meet our panelists before we jump into the candidate questions. I am. Our organizers have fielded an oh-so-Boulder cross-section of cycling professionals, safety advocates, bike policy and infrastructure experts, and deep supporters of cyclists of all ages and abilities, both now and into the future. I am so pleased to introduce Alex Howes, Andrew Feeney, Kristin Nordback, Adelaide Pear, Kate Rao, Martha Ruskowsky, and Kristin Weber. We will learn more about them when we get into the questions and answers, so let's quickly go over the ground rules and just get rolling. Next slide. In addition to being experts on the local cycling scene, the organizers have listened to their constituents and worked closely with members of the broader community to develop a list of 18 questions on a broad range of topics. They'll cover these focus areas. The panelists will each have a few questions, but only two candidates will be asked to address each one. So listen up, candidates. Next slide. You will each have two minutes to answer. You will know to start wrapping up when you hear the bike bell with 15 seconds left. A cowbell will signal the end of your time, and I will thank you in advance for your help in keeping the event moving. By the end of our time together tonight, every candidate will have been asked four questions, and we will have time for one last round robin for each of you to give us a one-minute closing statement. Is that all clear? All right then, let's get started with Alex Howes. Let's see if I can find my notes. Here we go. Alex Howes is a professional road racing cyclist, and he rides for the EF Pro Cycling Team. He is the 2019 Men's Road Race National Champion. Thanks so much for joining us, Alex. The floor is yours.
Probably hit unmute. Yeah, 2021, you could learn some things in 2020. Anyways, this first question is for Matt and Tara. Question number one: What specific steps will you take to ensure that we meet our Vision Zero goals for the safety of everyone using our transportation system?
I take it you want me to go first?
Yeah, we'll start with you, Matt, sorry.
Perfect. No worries. All good. Well, Alex, thanks for asking this question. And also just a big thanks for everyone who's sponsoring this, Boulder Mountain Bike Alliance, and Community Cycles, and Cyclists for Community. You know, Vision Zero is pretty clear. You know, we want to be eliminating the deaths and serious injuries in all modes of transit in our community. And the sad reality is we're failing that challenge. We have not stepped up to meet that vision. And I think we need to move beyond the vision and start talking about what is our Action Zero? What are we actually going to do to start doing this? It's been quite tragic, you know, when you think of what's been going on this year, and I reflect back to when Bill Davis was killed by a drunk driver on Jay Road. And that's not the first, and it's not the last, and we need to do better. You know, how many more friends and neighbors do we need to lose before we take real action? Well, as a member of City Council, that really starts with my tenure on council, which we're going to start with action. We're going to start by making an investment in our values, and our values are a healthy lifestyle and being able to move freely and equity and safely through our community. So what does that mean? Well, it means by thinking about things like lowering speed limits. You know, my street is a 20 is plenty street, and I've already noticed that there is a de-escalation of speed, and my kids and certainly my neighbors' kids feel more comfortable being out on the sidewalk in the streets than they did before. You know, as a family that cycles around and takes my kids around, I feel it's really important that we think of not only speed limits, but as a parent, what are we doing with our infrastructure to make sure our kids are safe being able to get to and from school? Talked to many parents of kids in our local middle schools and high schools, and they don't feel safe with their kids moving around, and we don't have clearly safe and well-defined bike lanes for them to do that. And that really leads to protected bike lanes. Look, we need to build the future we want for our community, and that starts by having a place where people can still drive their cars, but we have a safe place for our bicyclists and our pedestrians to get through our community. At the end of the day, let's be committed to building that future of where we want to be 10, 20, 30 years from now, and that starts right now. Thank you.
Thanks, Matt. Tara?
Hey there, everyone. I'm Tara Wiener, as you know, running for City Council. When it comes to Vision Zero, you know, I walk around a lot door-to-door. That's my favorite thing to do. And one thing I notice is, is the 20 mile per hour speed limit is not, I've never seen it enforced. Cars go whizzing by these small streets where bicyclists could be and children playing, and that's it. Nothing ever happens. So I would like to see enforcement, and maybe one way to do that would be cameras. I can tell you that I got a speeding ticket one time. It was pretty hefty on 30th Street, and that was pretty much the last time I wanted to speed. So I think that to bring down, to bring that, to make people drive slower, I think enforcement is crucial. I also believe that we need to have no right on red on the large intersections. I don't need to tell you guys why. You all know why. But it's definitely not safe. And of course, I agree with Matt on the separated bike lanes. I do want to talk about one thing that unnerves me as a biker, and that is what I believe will help with the fatalities, and that are the shopping centers and the parking lots where it's very difficult to navigate going in and out, and it is really unclear to drivers what they should be doing, you know, as far as the painting that is on the roads, you know, and in the parking lot. So I really like to work on making our shopping centers and our parking lots safer. And that way, we can share the road better. I'm a big fan of the very short amount of, you know, the separation on baseline, and I just wish that we could have more of that because for me to get from my house to that separation, I have to go past so many dangerous intersections, and then I think that to have a bike culture, we need to work on safety, and we need to bring Vision Zero to truly zero. Look at that. I finished early. Awesome.
Thank you both so much. That was great. Yeah, sorry, you just touched on this a bit, but this next question is for Michael and Dan. Right on red and unprotected left lane, left turn, unprotected left turns account for more than half of Boulder's serious fatal bicycle traffic. The city has been installing leading-to-deafesting intervals, LPI, and no right turn on red signage at some intersections. Do you support a no-right-turn-on-red ordinance? And what other street design elements would you support that slow traffic and make our streets safer for people walking and biking?
Thanks, Alex. I'll go first, since you called my name, and is that your baby in the background?
Yes, that would be my baby in the background.
Thanks for the question, and thanks for BMA and Community Cycles and C4C for hosting this. This is a great opportunity for us. With respect to your question, you know, obviously, I support the no turn on red, with the no right turn on red ordinance, and measures to increase having those at various intersections. But honestly, I look at this question as, you know, for me, I'm not an engineering expert, and I would be depending on engineers to tell us where they believe that these safety measures should be implemented in addition to having robust community engagement, particularly from the biking community, as to where they believe we should have more of these safety measures put in place. I support the installation of the LPIs. But again, I would need to speak to the experts in order to tell you exactly where that these should be placed. I'm not opposed to universal placement, but again, to me, that is more of community engagement. You know, that being said, I believe that having the ballard protection, protected intersections provide a significant safety measure for cyclists. I support having more LPIs throughout our city, specifically at, just last week, I was trying to cross the intersection of Folsom and Mapleton, although it's not really an intersection, but trying to get across the street there. It's extremely dangerous. There's a bend in the road, no intersection, no light, no LPI, no crosswalk. That would be an ideal placement, as an example, for an LPI. Similarly, with Ninth and Mapleton, same thing. If you're at that stop sign on Mapleton, you've got cars coming up Ninth, and they're coming up a hill, and they don't see that intersection until they're right on top of it. So the views are blocked by trees. That also would be an ideal location for an LPI where, you know, people who are, as they're approaching up Ninth.
Yeah. Time's up. Dan, how do you feel about this?
Well, again, my name's Dan Williams, running for Boulder City Council. I'm so excited we're having a cyclist forum. I mean, I've been an avid cyclist, really, my whole life, and this isn't a discussion we have enough in Boulder. I think this is the first cycling forum for City Council, certainly since I've been here. This is a really important discussion, so first, just thank you. In terms of right on red, I mean, just in September, an 83-year-old pedestrian named Did Yingli Chao was killed walking across the street when a driver turned right on red. That's a huge problem. Now, I went back and looked to figure out why we have a right-on-red rule. It dates from the 1970s. It was a gas-saving measure. I think we need to decide today if this is the right approach, or if we should be looking at electric vehicles and bicycling and walking as a more effective climate strategy, and, you know, revisiting whether we should have right-on-red at all. But really, what I want to do is follow the data. I mean, we have a city staff that I think we need to unleash them to experiment on our streets and see what makes the biggest difference for bike safety. So whether that's right-on-red, or LPIs, or bumpouts like we saw on Quince Avenue, or, you know, protected bike lanes, or separated and raised bike lanes, or even things like the design environment that makes such a big difference, like having trees. It's been shown to slow traffic and mitigate heat islands at the same time. So the bottom line is, I want us to look at all of these things, put them all on the table, analyze them, and see what makes the biggest difference to make cyclists safer in Boulder, because that's the goal. We can start doing this immediately with demonstration projects, and we frankly need to do it to make our city safer.
Thank you so much. Sneaking in before the bell there. I guess we'll move on to question three here. This question is for Jacques and David. Do you support e-bike use on regional trails such as South Boulder Creek and Boulder Canyon to create more connections for people to bike safely to and from adjacent towns?
Yeah, I guess I'll go first. I do fully support the use of e-bikes on these trails. I think we need to increase access for e-bikes across the city and across the county. One trail that I see bikers actually using is the trail next to 36 that heads to Lewisphone Superior. That's a good one for people to commute on, but going up to Ned, I think, on the canyon would be a good one for people. And then the South Boulder Creek on the bike path on the sidewalk, I think there's plenty of space for e-bikes. You know, down by the creek, I think it gets a little bit narrow, so we'd have to, you know, just be conscious above other citizens and residents down there hanging out. I think with e-bikes, something we need to look at increasing is charging ports for e-bikes across the city, so people are more incentivized to use e-bikes. You know, areas like downtown Pearl Street, 28th Street on the Hill, areas near the university, shopping centers, all this stuff would be a really cool area to have charging centers for people's e-bikes, so more people want to and are able to commute with them. Thank you.
Hi, I'm David Takahashi, and this is an excellent question. It is interesting that you picked South Boulder Creek and Boulder Canyon. I lived up in Boulder Canyon, and the idea of having an e-bike coming downhill on the path is rather daunting to me. So I believe that e-bikes are going to be a game changer in terms of our ability to get out of cars. However, I think there is a public safety concern here where e-bikes are really challenging us to really think about complete streets. I believe that e-bikes really belong more on the street than on the paths. And I say this because walking the bike paths even before e-bikes was challenging enough that I have just stopped doing it. So yeah, something moving 30 miles an hour, the motorized skateboards, the motor, just, you know, scooters. Things are really changing in a good way, but in a concerning way. So I think we're looking at reinventing and really bringing public safety and the concerns that these are multimodal paths, everything from walking to e-bikes. Thank you very much.
Thank you all so much.
Thanks so much. Alex, thank you very much for joining us. I know you have a noisy constituent in the background there, so in case you're not here at the end when we thank all of the panelists, we really appreciate your time this evening. Thanks.
We'll be around even though she can't vote. Thank you all so much for being here.
You'll have to vote for her. All right, our next panelist is Andrew Feeney. But before I introduce him, we are having a little bit of trouble with the bells on the timekeeping, and so we're going to switch, I think, for the remainder of the question-and-answer period, just to verbal warnings. So you'll hear a warning at 15 seconds, and then someone will say "time" when your two minutes is up. So that's just a small change for the people answering candidates. Just be aware, you'll be hearing that instead of the bells. Okay, Andrew Feeney is the head coach of Fairview High's mountain bike team, and he is the Colorado High School Cycling League Coach of the Year. I think it's also worthy of note, and congratulations, Andrew, on the Fairview team's second-place finish at the state finals last weekend. You're doing a terrific job. Thanks for joining us tonight.
Thank you for having me here, and thanks for all the candidates and the panelists for being here. My first question is for Michael and Tara, and it is, "Off-road gravel cycling and mountain biking are popular recreation activities, including youth camps, high school mountain bike teams, and community enjoyment. There are very few non-motorized, natural-surface, single-track trails that are open to bikes that extend from Boulder to our open spaces. Do you think existing trails that connect to bike-friendly open spaces should be updated to be accessible to bike use? Should new trails be built to serve this need, or something else? Why or why not?"
Yeah, Andrew, I'll go first. So thanks for the question, and just so everybody knows, I'm a lawyer by trade, and I don't mean to give you the lawyerly answer, but I found that this question was very difficult to answer based on the generality of the question. If this question's referring to existing trails that connect or deliver a cyclist to bike-friendly open space, yes, I agree those connector trails should be updated and accessible to bike use. If the question's asking me whether or not our trail system should be updated to allow more mountain bike access on existing open-space trails, I'll say that I'm not morally opposed to updating our trail system to allow for more mountain bike access and use, but I think we need to be very specific and identify which trails we're actually referring to. So without more information, it's hard for me to make a blanket statement that all trails should be open to mountain bike access, but I also do not support denying access to all trails for mountain bike access. And I know it sounds like I'm kind of talking out of both sides of my mouth, but I did find the question, based on the generality of it, was very difficult to answer. I'm a mountain biker myself, so I'm sensitive to the lack of trail access for mountain bikes. Similarly, with respect to building new trails, I need more information, like where are we planning on building these trails? What type of community engagement has been completed to assess the community's input on creating new trails? If I had more specific information, I could more competently answer this question. But again, I would just stress that I'm a cyclist, I'm a mountain biker, and I am sensitive to having access to trails, and I do think that we could be doing better with respect to having more mountain bike access on some of our trails, even if that means we need to move to sort of like an alternating system like what we have at Patasso.
Warning.
Where you've got, some days are available for mountain bike access, and some days are not.
Do you want me to go now?
Yes.
Okay, okay. So when it comes to mountain biking, I could tell you that when I go, you know, when I've gone door-to-door, which I love to do, because I get to hear from the community, I've run into quite a few mountain bikers, and they are all complaining that we're not a mountain bike-friendly community. And I have to agree with them. We have so much, I'm a hiker, but still, it's not fair. We have so much hiking, we have so many hiking trails. We just don't have, we don't have anything to give to our mountain biking community. So I feel like we need to up our mountain biking game. It's just, for me, it's really actually fairness. We have plenty of, you know, we have plenty of trails for the electric bikes that, that will be me. I have an electric bike and road bikes, and even for kids and such, but we just don't have it, and we need to do something about it. I feel really strongly about that. Whether, I agree with Michael also, that we have to think outside the box and maybe do alternating days. I will say that when I talk to OSMP folks, they're concerned about a lot of things like species and harming the environment and such, but is it too much to ask, I said this earlier, to give the mountain bike folks some trails, just a few trails? I say it's not too much to ask, and I want to be part of the solution for that. Whether or not there should be new trails, I feel like it would be a good idea, actually, if we can figure out how to do it without getting pushback from the various other factions. So to me, if you want to solve a problem in Boulder, you have to bring people together, get them on the same page, and push them along in the right direction. And since we want to be known as a biking community, I assume we also want to be known as a mountain biking community. Let's figure out the best solutions, the least pushback, and work together to solve this problem and make our mountain biking community happy.
Great, thank you. The next question is for Nicole and Jacques, and the question is, "The city, county, CDOT, and RTD will need to work together to make safe local connections to the Highway 119 and Boulder Lions Bike Way. How will you work with these partners to increase ridership and fully utilize this infrastructure?"
I'll just go first. I'm just going to jump right in. Thanks. I haven't had a chance to speak yet. Thank you to everybody for hosting us tonight. I really appreciate this. My husband and I lived in North Boulder when we first moved here in 2005, and we rode up 36 toward Lyons pretty often. It felt unsafe back then, and it still feels unsafe 16 years later. A disproportionate number of cycling accidents happen when riders are being buzzed on 36 and 119. We really need infrastructure like bikeways and protected lanes for people to safely commute and recreate on these highways. And we really need to prioritize safe connections, like where 119 intersects with Iris and foothills, which can make the driving experience easier for cars, too. I've been thrilled for these reasons that a bikeway that's going to connect Boulder and Longmont is in the works for 119. Our city, the county, and Longmont are all working together on this project. We formed a working group to make recommendations, and I support this ongoing work. The Boulder Lions Bike Way is less flushed out than the 119 Bike Way, but I support working on a bikeway for this stretch of 36 as well. The 119 Bike Way development process will hopefully give us some good insight into how we can work with other cities and the county and state to develop regional bikeways that will benefit Boulder cyclists and commuters. A lot of our solutions to transportation, housing, and climate challenges are going to involve regional solutions, which is why I've been working really hard to build relationships, not just with folks in Boulder, but also with city councilors and city trustees and neighboring communities. We'll get better outcomes for Boulder if we have strong relationships with other cities in our county. I see bikeways on 36 and 119 as important infrastructure to have in place, not just for recreation, but also to get commuters out of their cars and onto bikes, especially e-bikes. We don't have to worry about last-mile solutions if people are using bikes to commute to Boulder, and we can get closer to our climate goals if we can get some of our 60,000 in commuters to bike rather than drive. Though increasing ridership and using this infrastructure, remaining in designing and maintaining bikeways for year-round usage, like keeping them clear of ice, having safe systems that people can ride year-round is really going to be critical if we want people to replace their cars with bikes. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks for the question. I think we should expand the Boulder Lions Highway, maybe a little bit wider, so there's more access for bikers on the road. Growing up here, that's always been a very popular area for cyclists. It's part of the Buffalo Bicycle Classic that I used to help out with as a kid when my mom worked for the university, so very familiar with that area. I'd love to see it expanded upon. One thing that working with RTD could help with, or I'd be more in favor of actually switching to our own transit system for a city and having a free electric autonomous transportation, so that way people are incentivized to take other forms of transportation. So if they want to bike one way from Lyons into Boulder, and the weather turns out like it did today, where it was, you know, nicer this morning, rainy this afternoon, they could hop on the bike for free and not feel like they have to call an Uber or pay for a bus fare, scrape change up together, something like that. The Highway 119 extension is exciting to see that as well. It's great to see other forms of transportation being encouraged in Boulder County for commuters. Once again, working with our own infrastructure, hopefully for transportation, that could allow free electric autonomous transportation, where people, you know, in the morning bike in, later evening, they don't feel like biking home, they can get on a free bus. And, you know, we'd have to look at reallocating funds from RTD if we were to do this, and then working with CDOT and engineers to find optimal expansion ways on the Boulder Lions Bike Way. But all of these things are huge in the fight towards combating climate change. So anything we can do to combat climate change, I'm 100% behind. Thank you.
Thanks for those answers. Appreciate it.
And thank you, Andrew. Really appreciate your joining us this evening as well. Our next panelist is Krista Nordback. Krista is a Senior Research Associate at the University of North Carolina Highway Safety Research Center with over a decade of experience in bicycle and pedestrian safety. Dr. Nordback is an award-winning researcher who has presented at national and international conferences and webinars on pedestrian and bicyclist safety. Thank you, and welcome, Krista.
Thanks, Tila. So this question is for Matt Benjamin and Michael Christie. Bike theft affects almost everyone in Boulder, and despite dipping somewhat over the last year, overall theft has increased in recent years. Even when a bike is reported stolen, the owner has less than a 5% chance of ever seeing their bike again. Almost every bike shop in town has been a victim of theft in the past year, some multiple times. These thefts represent people's means of transportation and small business owners' livelihood. What will you do to work with city staff, the police, the justice system and social services in a way that eliminates bike theft in our city? And let's start with Matt.
Well, Krista, thank you for this question. There's no doubt that we have all seen a rise in crime and certainly as it results from COVID. Thankfully, we are seeing a reduction. I mean, it's not where we want it to be, so it means that there's still work left to be done. You know, with regards to some of these bike thefts, you know, it's a mixture of petty theft, but also keep in mind, we have professional crime rings that are from out of town, that are coming in, snatching up, chopping up bikes and heading right out of town. I mean, that really demands that we think a little bit more about just beyond Boulder, but a little bit more regionally in terms of working with some of our sister communities about how we battle this. Because those bikes are being sold and being repurposed somewhere else in our neighboring communities. And so I think we can work on those partnerships. You know, we need to really think about the awareness and education campaigns. That's something I think is really important. You know, some people have had their bikes stolen from their garages in front of their house or place of business. Some aren't using very sophisticated or hard locks and some are, and some are. And so I think an education campaign is really vital. Well, what does that look like? You know, certainly we don't leave our cars running and unlocked with the keys in it. So I think we can take better care with how we treat our bikes. You know, I think about registration, you know, I didn't even, when I got my bikes, my e-bikes two, a year ago, I didn't think about registration until not just very recently. So I think bike registration is really key. In fact, I'm going to go ahead and put the bike registration form in the chat right now for people so that they can see it. So I think that's really important for anybody who hasn't registered. Well, what else does that mean? It means that we should be thinking about tracking for bikes. We should also be thinking about how to improve or even some subsidies and incentives for people that are lower income and don't have the means for stronger and safer bike locks. You know, this is an opportunity for our community to really look at property crime that affects all of us. And we need our police to be focused on serious crimes like bike theft and not running mental health and education or addiction calls of our unhoused. And so I think we have an opportunity to move our policing into really taking care of the real crimes that matter to us the most. Thank you.
Great. Thanks, Matt and Michael.
Yeah, thank you, Krista. So I've been campaigning since January and I can tell you that I am so tired of hearing the complaints from our community about bike thefts. I know that our police force and the DA's office have been working in undercover operation to break up two large-scale bike theft rings. And as a result of our police force, the DA, bike thefts are down about 35% from last year, so that's a good sign. But I feel like even having one bike stolen is one too many. As of the end of last week, we've had 540 bike thefts this year. Combined with last year, we've had over $2.5 million worth of bikes stolen in Boulder. I see this as a public safety issue. Our police force is currently down approximately 40 officers. If I'm elected, I'll do all I can to help Chief Harold increase officer staffing to the full complement of 190 officers. Right now, what we're seeing is that there's no consequence to committing a property crime in Boulder. To me, this only emboldens those committing property crimes to continue to do so. When I was a JAG officer in the Air Force doing criminal prosecutions, I often argued to juries, the old adage of choices and consequences. If you make the choice of committing a crime, then you will suffer the consequence that come with that criminal activity if you're caught. And in my opinion, if you steal somebody's bike, that means you go to jail. You get arrested, you go to jail. If you steal a bike and you're caught, you're going to suffer the consequences. Unfortunately, our jails are closed to criminals committing property crimes, so we don't have the leverage we need as a city. So we need to be working with Sheriff Joe Pele to open up the jails and having them closed, I believe is doing our community a significant disservice.
Thanks. Appreciate that answer. Okay. Question seven, this is for Jacques and Lauren. So the average commute into Boulder is about 18 miles one way. And this is beyond the capacity of most of us to bicycle on a regular bike. But it's very doable on an e-bike. And we have these wonderful long-distance multi-use paths that make a longer commute enjoyable. But the prices of e-bikes are beyond many and especially our low-income frontline and service workers. These are the same people who may work hours where transit service is spotty. How would you encourage more e-bike use for longer trips? And how would you make e-bikes affordable and legal on our paths, as some of the other questioners have asked, to our essential workers? And let's start with Jacques.
Thank you for this question. Yeah, so B-Cycle has incentivized a couple e-bike setups, so I think that's a good start. You know, I think putting these E-Cycle e-bike stations at like public transport stations, like the downtown Boulder Bus Station, the Table Mesa Park and Ride, areas where people can, you know, park their car outside of town and make the commute a little bit easier, reduce congestion and traffic inside Boulder would be a good start. Like I mentioned earlier, having charging stations for e-bikes to encourage more use of them so people don't have range anxiety. You know, range anxiety can definitely be a big thing for people to distract, discourage them from choosing an e-bike. And then, you know, for incentives for people who are lower income, who can't afford an e-bike, I think we, as the city, should offer, you know, just a few hundred dollars to help incentivize them if we can, if we can allocate the funds from somewhere. We'd have to look into the budget for that. Also looking to encourage employers in the city to incentivize the e-bikes or, you know, have charging stations at their area of employment for people with e-bikes. You know, I think it's just really about building up the infrastructure and making it more readily available. So increasing the amount of paths and increasing road lanes for these bikes, so they're not congesting up the sidewalks. You know, because they're going to be going at pretty high speeds, so we don't want them just knocking over grandmas and students on runs and that sort of stuff. So we have to be conscious about how we're allowing these in our city, but I think encouraging them is a great option.
Thanks, Lauren.
Yay, I get one. So my name's Lauren Folkerts and I'm running for city council, like everyone else here. I live at the top of Shanahan Ridge and I work downtown. Both of these locations are in the skip line. But now that I have an e-bike, I can easily beat the bus in both directions and pick up groceries. Having an e-bike has really been a game changer for me. It makes me a more rule-abiding cyclist, because I'm not trying to keep up my speed. And I think that they're fantastic. I strongly support making these more affordable and accessible, especially for our frontline workers. In the past, the state has partnered with Community Cycles to run a program for lower-income residents in our community that was highly successful to, you know, reduce the cost of e-bikes. I would really like to see the city step up and continue or create a similar program. I'm also excited to see B-Cycle's success with adding electric bikes to their lineup and happy to hear that they plan on expanding this program. I would like to see the city work with B-Cycle to make sure that we locate these stations so that they're easily accessible for lower-income residents. And we also need to make sure that we're providing safe parking and charging locations throughout the city. We require electric car charging for new homes. I think that we could reasonably require charging for, you know, new bike stations as well. As you mentioned, we have some amazing bike paths and I really think that we should push to fast-track these projects and reduce barriers to biking so that more of our residents can enjoy this amazing amenity space our community has.
Great. Thanks for the good answers.
And thank you, Krista, for your help this evening. It's always nice to see you. All right, our next panelist is Adelaide Pear. Adelaide is an advocate for cyclist safety and the author of Degloved. Every star, every scar has a story. She strives to help people who have survived traumatic and life-threatening crashes and build empathy and understanding among people who haven't. Welcome, Adelaide.
Hi, thank you. All right, this first question is for Dan and Michael. Where have you traveled and seen great bicycle infrastructure? What would you like to see replicated in Boulder? And Dan, if you want to start.
Yeah, thank you. So I just want to start by thanking you for all the work you've done on bicycle safety and sharing your journey after your accident on US 36. I mean, it's courageous in ways that are really laudable. In terms of places where I've seen great bike infrastructure, you know, I want to just emphasize two. One is Zurich, where I was in Zurich five years ago and then I was there this last summer. And there was just an enormous contrast. I mean, Zurich's done all the right things, like protected bike lanes, contra-flow lanes, bike traffic lights, really the key is just keeping bikes and cars separate to the extent possible. But what really struck me in Zurich was in just five years, the number of cyclists out was just extraordinarily greater. And that made the roads safer for me when I was biking around Zurich, because when you have that critical mass, cars are expecting bicycles, bicycles obviously are looking for the cars. It just changes the culture and it was changed quick. One other city I want to highlight, we don't have to look overseas for great things that have happened. I mean, Philadelphia is the city where I grew up. The streets were built narrow. They were built before there were cars. And as a child, there's a main east-west route that I biked a gazillion times. It was two lanes heading in the same direction, so one-way street. And it was dangerous. And when I was home last in Philadelphia, I was shocked because the engineers did such a great job. They closed one of the two lanes, made it a protected bike lane the entire way east-west through the city. And what really struck me is in this old city with narrow streets, it didn't tie up traffic. Cars could still move through this downtown city just fine.
Warning.
And that's what we need to do here. We need to find solutions like that that have protected bike lanes and other ways that keep us safe and also allow traffic to flow. Philadelphia's done it, Zurich's done it, Boulder certainly can do this.
Thank you. And Michael?
Yeah, Adelaide, similar to Dan, I just want to thank you for being here. I read your book a couple of years ago and just found it riveting. I've shared your book with many people. Michael Stone is a good friend of mine and he's told me a lot about you. And I've trained on Highway 36 and every time I come across that intersection, I always get the chill. So, you know, thank you for being here and thank you for your efforts and what you've done. I think for me, if you, I don't think we need to look overseas, like Dan said, I think, you know, Philadelphia is a good example. I also would look to what they're doing or have done in Washington DC. I think they've got a great biking infrastructure plan there. And I think that's a prime example of what I'd like to see here in Boulder. They have cement bollards that are beautifully painted by local artists. I think we could be doing that same thing here in Boulder. I think we need to pivot and prioritize our cycling over the interest of SOB travel. I will not be that person who karma shames anyone, but I do believe that we can prioritize our cycling community over our automobile industry. We need to expand upon and improve the safety of our biking infrastructure. To me, this would include more bike lanes, more connected bikeways, widening lanes in areas where we have higher traffic density, placing barrier protections or bollards in higher-density intersections. Boulder's 2019 Low Stress Walk and Bike Network Plan has several comprehensive maps detailing existing and proposed bike lanes and buffered bike lanes. Ideally, I'd like to see more of the buffered lanes. I'm an avid cyclist. My son and I ride our bikes to his school on most days. And I can tell you, I've had, I've had two very close calls on Pine Street with my son. That's enough to make you realize, like, we are not doing this right in Boulder and we could be doing a much better job. I love the idea of placing more bollards along bike lanes to also bring more awareness to people in their cars.
Warning.
If we can make our biking safer and more appealing, we're going to get more people on their bikes, which also in turn will help us move toward our climate goals and combat climate change.
Thank you both. The next question is going to be for Lauren and Steve. Lauren, you can start one. As measured by the Transportation Department's report on progress, the city's Vision Zero and Transportation Master Plan goals are far from being met. In fact, on almost every measure, we are trending in the wrong direction, yet there appears to be no urgency around addressing this trajectory. What will you do to lead the city on these life and death matters to meet our community objectives for safety, reduce congestion and reducing vehicle miles traveled?
Thank you. I think this is a really important question. So the goals of Vision Zero are great, right? I mean, you can't get much better than zero injuries and fatalities. That is absolutely what our community needs to be headed towards. But as you mentioned, we're falling short. This has been a terrible year in terms of bike fatalities and it's imperative that we make the necessary changes required to avoid more tragedy. Meeting these goals will require policy changes and engineering, but we don't need to start from scratch. We have some great existing examples and we can look to other communities for tested and proven strategies. You know, there are those, both here and abroad, we have statistically verified design options we can incorporate, you know, around separating bike lanes, but also, you know, we're doing a lot of statistical analysis now around just looking at where close calls come from. There's a lot of cities implementing things where they track near misses and use those near misses in order to address changes that need to happen before they see significant accidents and injuries. I also support moving forward with the recommendations of our Transportation Master Plan. Again, we don't need to come up with new policies, but we need to implement the ones that we have established. Rumble strips and paint are not enough. Unless we make our bike paths feel safe, we will not succeed in convincing more members of our community to use their bikes for regular commuting. And this is really important, both for our quality of life and for our environment. And as Dan mentioned, getting, there's safety in numbers. We need to make it safe for everyone so that we have the numbers of people biking so that it's a self-fulfilling prophecy and that we all become safer.
Thank you, Lauren. And Steve?
Steve, I think you need to unmute still.
All right. First, first time I'm speaking. Okay. Sorry about that. So my name's Steve Rosenbluh. Just said, just take issue with the premise of the question. We have, we have improved on some metrics, flat on other metrics. For example, vehicle miles traveled by residents has been trending lower. More people are using their bikes. We've gone good measure, making biking safer within Boulder. But in commuters, the number is increasing their commuting further. So that increase in vehicle miles traveled has overwhelmed residents getting on their bikes. In addition, fatalities and crashes are flat despite lots more people on the roads and lots more cyclists. So what we need to do is twofold. The majority of crashes occur in a couple of places, on our arteries and at certain intersections. Over half of bike crashes and fatalities take place on left and right turns on intersections. So we need to, we need to take the best engineering and make the investments to have safe bike intersections and take a look at those things that Dan mentioned about the trade-offs between left and right turns, protected or unprotected, because those are just really, really dangerous moments. The major thing we can do is address the 60,000 in commuters by having a modern mass transit system. As Jack mentioned, I think we need to take a firm look at our relationship with RTD, which is not serving our needs, and then potentially pay for that with, one, the subsidies we're currently giving to RTD and two, explore parking congestion fees and take those funds, which will incentivize people to get out of their single occupancy vehicles and onto either mass transit or e-biking, because that's the future. So with those things, we could really make progress on
Warning.
On our zeros goes, but by getting lots of cars off the road, especially internal combustion engine, onto buses, onto bikes, and then make those investments to make biking in Boulder much safer. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. And then the next question is going to be for Matt and Lauren. And that is, what are some ways that you would support increased access to bicycles, e-bikes? e-bikes, and safe biking and walking facilities for disenfranchised communities, especially communities of color?
Alright, I'm happy to go there, um, since Lauren, you've gotten a few in a row there. Alright. So, you know, Adelaide, I I want to echo what Dan and Michael said in complimenting the manner in which you've turned a personal tragedy, tragedy into immense education and action for our community and beyond. And and I just want to pay a lot of respect to that because that takes a lot of courage and and effort to do that. So so thank you, and we're all better off because of that. You know, one could say that I think to some extent, we've got the cart before the horse. Or in this instance, you know, we have sort of the bike before the bollard, pardon the pun. But really what it comes down to is, I I think we need to think about, do we have the infrastructure in place to entice disenfranchised communities or people of color to actually transition to a different mode of transit like a regular bike or e-bike? Um, because if you build it, they will come as, as, as it's stated in Field of Dreams, but we haven't built it, so I'm not sure they will come. And so I think this comes down to infrastructure investment. You know, where do we have Boulder B-cycles? Where do we have them? Well, we certainly don't have them near our mobile home parks. We certainly don't have them near our Boulder Housing Partner properties. And we certainly don't even have them near where we're building a lot of our new housing developments. So so I think it really, really starts with infrastructure and I want to make sure we do that first before we start thinking about, well, who wants an e-bike and who wants to use one? It seems futile if they've got a bike, but then there's not the infrastructure or the safe means from which they can move throughout the community to get to work, take their kids to school, or go to the grocery store or go to retail. You know, at the end of the day, we we've just got to invest. I think that's been a theme we're hearing is infrastructure, infrastructure, infrastructure. So so I think, I think we're all agreeing that that's the case here. And I think you're going to find um, as as voters, is that all of us looking to run for council are going to bring that infrastructure. So at the end of the day, let's make sure we get that done, protected bike lanes, and make sure that we have places for bikes to be safely stowed and think about investing in broader B-cycle coverage throughout the city for communities of color and those that are disenfranchised to have a better shot um, at these types of transportation. Thank you.
Thank you, Matt, and then Lauren?
Thank you. So I agree with Matt, I think the first piece of this puzzle is infrastructure. We need to make sure we have bike paths and safe streets that are equitably distributed throughout our community. Well-designed streets and sidewalks are safer, more beautiful, and can help us address our climate challenges through reducing heat island effect. We also need to have um, electric B-cycle stations located for easy access, especially near our lower-income communities, um, so that they have low-barrier e-bike options. One of the things I noticed while canvassing some of our mobile home parks in town was the number of bikes out in the elements. Um, you know, that clearly is not great for those bikes um, and represents some of the challenges that those communities face. I know for me, having a safe spot, oh, wrong side, to park my, my e-bike um, is a really important, is crucial for having it make sense for my lifestyle. Um, we have to make sure that these spaces are accessible um, for secure bike parking and charging. But before we move it forward with any of these items, I would really want to make sure that we check in with these communities to see what other ideas or requests they have, because nobody needs, knows the needs of a community better than the members of that community themselves. So. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, candidates, and thank you, Adelaide. Really appreciate you joining us tonight and helping us out with this. Uh, I just wanted to take a moment, Steve had mentioned, uh, you know, that it was his first time to speak. Just want to reiterate that we have spaced out the questions and that by the, by the time we get to the end of question eighteen, all of the candidates will have had an opportunity to answer precisely four questions. So don't fret that Lauren just got picked on so frequently, uh, that Steve's only had one. We will definitely get to all of you uh and make sure there's an equitable distribution of those chances. Uh, I'd now love to introduce Kate Rao as our next panelist. She is the founder and executive director of the Colorado High School Cycling League headquartered here in Boulder. Her organization supports the development of over sixteen hundred high school-aged athletes from more than a hundred and fifty schools in Colorado, as well as parts of Wyoming and New Mexico. Thank you, Kate, welcome, and thanks for helping us out this evening.
Thank you, everyone. Um, I greatly appreciate people um, putting their name in the hat and running for office. We all know that uh grassroots local elections are probably the most important. So um, and I will say that a hundred and fifty-seven student athletes representing Boulder County uh, were at state championships in Durango, which was about nineteen percent of the student athletes who participated. So um, and again, uh, the coaches are gold and Andrew Finney was recognized for his um, efforts. So um, this is a question for both Nicole and Steve. Many people tell us they do not feel safe using the multi-use paths, so they don't ride a bike as much as they would like. What will you do as a member of the city council to ensure that the multi-use paths are safe and accessible for all?
Thank you. Um, and I just want to thank you, Kate, for all you've done to advocate for youth cycling in Boulder and around Colorado. You've made my job as a parent, a bike-loving parent who's trying to create bike-loving kids, a lot easier. So thank you so much for that. Um, I think one aspect that this question may be intending to get at is around the encampments issue. Um, this really needs more than two minutes, so I'm going to direct you to Maya and Dan's daily camera guest commentary a few weeks ago. They talked about some ways we can end the encampments that have grown under the current council's policies. We really shouldn't have people camping in our parks, uh, but it's important to know that many folks that I've talked with, myself included, feel perfectly safe riding by encampments. I'm on our multi-use paths nearly every day. I ride during the day, at night, in the light, in the dark, by myself and with other people. The places where I don't feel safe are always the spots where multi-use paths intersect with cars. Everyone I know has been hit or nearly hit by biking through one of these intersections. Inconsistent path maintenance and bad weather makes our paths dangerous too. I've had near misses a couple of times due to ice or slick paths. I sometimes ride on the street, but that isn't always helpful either, since bike lanes are often used to hold snow from the roads. If we want to increase ridership, we need to increase rider safety in bad weather and in good weather. I think I may be in the minority a little bit in feeling like the entrances and exits to underpasses are safety hazards, but I think there are data showing that falls happen at these spots as well. There are often bushes that are blocking visibility at the entrances, like at the new underpass at Baseline and Broadway. The underpass lighting, especially transitioning from bright daylight or darkness into the dim underpasses, makes it hard to see pedestrians or bikes who are already in there or who are oncoming. And of course, all of these issues are exacerbated for people using wheelchairs or other mobility devices. A lot of these safety hazards we can solve by designing our transportation system for modes other than cars.
Warning.
That's what everyone else has been saying. This doesn't mean eliminating cars. It just means prioritizing the safety and comfort of the people who are walking, biking, and busing around town.
Thank you, uh, Steve, you're next.
Sure, so I I think this is an issue uh, not just with bike paths, but but generally with our, with our public spaces. There's an overwhelming concern in the community where people no longer feel safe uh, in in our shared spaces, which are supposed to be for the community. And and I would direct everyone to my and Michael's response to Dan and Nicole on on how to handle this issue. Uh, it's not just people sleeping or or recreating um, in our public spaces. It's an epidemic of mental health and drug addiction. And we need to get people the help they need and just as a community, agree that what's going on is unacceptable and our, our public spaces need to be safe for families. So just this morning, someone reached out to me um, that they walk from their, their job, the library uh, on the path and this morning, they were chased and harassed, and this is the fifth time this year that that's occurred. So uh, we need to invest in the services and the institutions to get these people um, who are really suffering uh, the help and the resources they need um, to get to a better life, because, you know, sleeping under an underpass uh, in our parks is not good for them, not good for our community. Um, so it's, we need to make sure, I think, more patrols to make sure there's no uh, refuse that people can ride over. Uh, the conditions are safe and um, and most importantly, you know, the people aren't being harassed and made to feel, made to feel unsafe when they're trying to get to their, you know, either recreate or get to their jobs, get to their businesses, especially, you know, employees trying to get home at night.
Thank you both for those questions. My next question, of course, is going to be around mountain biking. Um, in June twenty sixteen, Boulder City Council approved the North Sky Trail. It's definitely a vital multi-use connector trail between Boulder and open spaces to the north. Do you support the comp, the completion of this trail? If so, how would you help open space and mountain parks acquire the resources to start the planning, construction, and completion of this trail in twenty twenty-two? And that question goes to uh, Nicole and Matt.
Did you want to go first, Matt? I think I've gone first a couple of times, I'm happy if you want to.
Uh, my name's Benjamin, so I go, I go first all the time. It's all good.
Alright.
It's all good. Uh, I'm happy to go, so, so I'll do it, go for it, I I'm good, I'll, I'll do it. Happy to. And you can close, Nicole, which you're good at.
Yep, alright.
Um, so, oh, for one, this is an important question on, on a lot of fronts, because it speaks to how slow we move in our community at doing things that we promise and approve to get done. Th- this is emblematic of housing, other transportation infrastructure, it's emblematic of a lot of things. And so, you know, we can, we'll talk about North Sky Trail here, but thi- this is, this is, this is a systemic issue we have in our community of making communities do stuff and then dragging our feet. Um, we have a climate crisis and we have a means, we have a housing, and we have a transportation issue. So we need to be expeditious in in investing in the infrastructure. So to answer the question, yes, I fully support the completion of the North Sky Trail. You know, this went through extensive public process in the North TSA and and we, we don't need to relitigate it and this time you just get this done. You know, I I could sort of see both sides here. You know, I serve on the boards of a few concert, environmental conservation nonprofits. And one of the things that we've come to recognize when you're trying to to save critical habitat or critical species, or or just make sure that there is a good or wild urban interface, is that you also enjoy that you can't just lock these places away, because then people don't have the connection to then become the proper stewards we need to actually maintain that, that stewardship and keeping them protected. So this connector is really vital to, one, keeping people safe, but all, but more importantly, allowing people to stay connected. You know, this increases safety as it will bring, keep many bikers off some of our major roadways like Highway thirty-six, trying to connect to Left Hand Canyon Road. So bike safety is huge here and a big win. You know, I'd also say, based on the recent economic forecast the city got, Boulder is going to see increased city revenue in twenty twenty-two as compared to the pre-pandemic twenty nineteen. So we're going to have the resources, not just within the city, but within open space and mountain parks, the time to just reallocate and make that money work for our infrastructure needs going forward.
Thank you. Nicole, you're up.
Alright, I'm just going to build on Matt's comments, say yes, absolutely, I do support the completion of the North Sky Trail. Uh, this trail is a multi-use trail that would connect the north end of town, the Left Hand Canyon. Um, as Matt said, it went through an extensive and exhaustive process. And thank you to staff for your excellent work on this project and thank all of you for your patience and your advocacy uh, for this trail. You've helped us move forward, thank you for that. My guiding principle with regard to connector trails is that I want people to be able to ride to their rides. All of us here tonight who've lived and biked and commuted here for decades understand the importance of connector trails like this one. I'm supporting this trail not just because it will benefit the biking community, but also because connector trails are in line with so many of our city's goals, including climate and safety. When we finish the North Sky Trail, we'll get cars off the road, since fewer people will have to drive to Heil Ranch to ride, and we'll keep people safer by getting cyclists off of the more dangerous roadways. OSMP has the resources to finish up the North Sky Trail. It just needs to be seen as a priority. And setting priorities for work is exactly the role of council, so I'm really looking forward to making connector trails a priority if I get onto council. Building trails fast builds momentum for other bike projects as well. With the North Sky Trail moving forward, we can move on to creating new connectors and making existing trails and paths safer and more bike-friendly. I live just a few miles from Marshall Mesa and being able to ride through CU South and down Marshall Road to get there is fantastic, especially as a parent with young kids. Other than that very last intersection on Marshall Road before getting to the trailhead, it always feels safe and it even felt safe when my kids were younger. Everyone should have the ability to ride to nearby rides like my family does. With city councils, counselors who will prioritize bike safety and infrastructure, I really hope we can move forward, not just on the North Sky Trail, but on other connectors as well.
Thanks, candidates, that was great. And Kate, thank you so much for joining us. Uh, congratulations on your organization's success in Durango. Um, and we look forward to seeing more of you in the future.
Thanks.
Next up, uh, our panelist is Martha Wiskowski. She was once dubbed the Godmother of Complete Streets. She's an advocate for sustainable, safe, and equitable mobility. She's the president of the consulting firm Further Strategies and a Vision Zero Network Advisory Committee member. Martha, over to you.
Thanks, Tila, uh, and thanks to everybody for putting this together and candidates for participating. And I want to just do a quick shout out to Coach Finney and Kate Rao. Uh, my son raced with the Fairview Mountain Bike Team uh, and had a blast this season, so thank you for doing that. So uh, my question, my first question is for Steve and Tara. Do you support increased funding for improved bike infrastructure such as protected bike lanes, green streets, and safer intersections? If you do support more funding, how would you prioritize the competing needs of automobiles, bikes, pedestrians, and micro-mobility options like e-scooters? Uh, Steve, why don't you start?
Sure, so this is our, I don't know, probably twentieth forum and everyone's more funding. Unfortunately, the city doesn't have it. So um, I would look for every means we can uh, for transportation to get federal funding. Um, city's already getting a couple million dollars a year for the Federal Highway Safety Improvement Program. Uh, I would look for the, hopefully, infrastructure bill that passes. And then uh, making, making sure we're using our transportation funding, which is substantial, as effectively as possible. Um, so I I think that's looking in detail at our budget and going through every line item. It's over a million dollars to make sure that the, the improvements we're, we're making actually serve our broader community goals. I would take the, the construction that's going on in North Broadway, Broadway near the Holiday Neighborhood, which would have been an opportunity for some real great bike lanes and and increased safety, but instead it's just a highway repaving, and I view that as a big loss. Um, so in terms of prioritization, it should be with our goal in mind to make what's best for, best for humans and best for the climate, the safer, more convenient, cheaper alternative. So that's where our investment should go. Um, so it's twofold, one is reducing crashes and bike fatalities, and that's where we really got to focus on our arteries and intersections. But then, if, from my experience, even though I've never been in a bike accident here, where I feel most dangerous is where actually the accidents don't happen as much is on just the regular suite streets with those striped um, bike paths. So investing in a complete bike way, bike network uh, north-south, so that people, well, not just recreational cyclists, but commuters and people trying, throughout the city, are confident that, that when they're going with their children, their kids, um, they actually feel safe, which were in gender, uh, more of that critical mass that Dan spoke about. Um, so those are the investments with not just the stripes, but you know, the green bike lanes, protected bike lanes, all that, and that's how to prioritize. In terms of um, you know, e-bikes and scooters, I would look to the data. Um, you know, scooters have a much younger demographic, which is also the demographic that contributes to seventy percent of crashes, which is under twenty-nine. So we'd have to look at just the, not the safety of the, the instrument, but the demographic who's using it.
Thank you, um, Tara. Tara Wiener, you might be muted?
Oh, good enough. I was talking to the air, I'll say. I absolutely support increased funding for improved bike infrastructure. For me, I have a vision, and I think all of us candidates do too, which is exciting, for a bike culture, for increasing our bike culture. I even have a vision for this being, I'd love it to be the best bike city in the United States, I would. To do that, we need to improve our bike infrastructure for sure. And as everybody here said, protected bike lanes are crucial. What is stopping us from having this awesome bike, bike culture? It's going to be safety, accessibility, and specifically, people have talked about connectors and protected bike lanes. And what, and those are some of the things that are really stopping us for, for, from going forward, really. We also do need cars, I'm going to say, as I'm an older person, in the winter, I'm probably going to stick to my car, just because, you know, when you're older and you break something and it never really gets better. I'm just throwing that out there, so young people get ready. But um, as far as But as far as infrastructure, we need to put that first, I would say, because that's what we all want, not everybody here. As far as more funding and how to prioritize, I believe in balance. We can balance, and I actually think we can please everybody. Every, all of us are pedestrians. Most of us have automobiles. Most, all of us are bike riders. I don't think I'm ever going to go on an e-scooter. I'm a little nervous about it, but they look like a lot of fun. So I would say we just balance, we work together with each other, and we find the solutions. There's always a way to do that. But as far as safety, that's probably got to be the number one thing.
Warning.
Safe intersections, safety in our bike paths. I'm a very nervous biker, so I would like to see lighted tunnels, safety in our tunnels, safety at night and lighting especially, so that we can all feel comfortable and safe when we bike, including our children and me, for instance.
Thank you. Next question is for Dan and Nicole. And we'll start with Dan. Increasing bicycle mode share is a key tool in meeting our transportation master plan and climate action goals, but it has been little changed for decades. What specific steps will you take on council to allow or encourage Boulderites to use bikes for more of their travel? Dan?
So, you know, I see this as really a matter of our commitment to making bold changes. We need to do those changes now more than ever because we're in a climate emergency. You know, the city has a really well-thought-out transportation master plan. It also has a well-thought-out climate action plan. But what I think keeps us from hitting our goals and making progress is a lack of a sense of urgency. Boulder typically operates at a glacial pace when it comes to transportation changes. But look, a glacial pace just doesn't cut it when the glaciers are literally melting. Look, I've lived in Boulder for 15 years, and I've seen these delays that really make no sense at all, whether it's the North Sky Trail that Matt and Nicole talked about, or the Wonderland Lake updates that were supposed to have happened years ago. You know, Sue Prant at Community Cycles recently highlighted for us some really serious flaws on the 28th Street redesign north of Valmont. And when she dug into it, you know, what she explained to us is that these plans were drawn up 20 years ago. I mean, they're just really out of date. We need to take action, and we need to take action with the haste that the moment demands. That means doing things like I mentioned before on Quince, where we did bump outs very quickly, and then testing these things and talking to the community. And that means talking to neighbors, but it also means talking to schoolchildren who are walking on sidewalks. It means talking to bicycle commuters. It means talking to a broad section of people who use our roadways to make sure that when we do experiments like the one on Quince, we're doing them well, we're doing them safely. We can do it. You know, there's no excuse for the lack of progress we've made over the last 15, 20 years, 15 years since I've been here. We just need to have a council that's committed to getting these things done. And I'm looking forward to being on the council if you all elect me so that I can help be part of that process.
Thank you, Dan. Nicole?
People all over love to ride their bikes. Cities around the world have shown that we can tap into this love to create a healthier and happier and more sustainable city. We just need a transportation system where biking is safe, efficient, comfortable, and fun. As Dan mentioned, this transportation transformation can happen quickly. Paris is making major improvements in cycling infrastructure, including building lots of protected bike lanes to make people feel safe. And bike usage there increased 54% as car trips have declined. We can have this sort of transformation in Boulder, too, to get more people to ride bikes. Every major corridor should have a protected bike facility, and every major intersection should become a protected intersection. This will cost money, but in a lot of cases, the implementation can start as a cheap, quick tactical design, and then over time transition to something more formalized. There are also things we could do today for free to make biking easier. For instance, our traffic signal cycles are really long, which means when you're on your bike, you're often waiting for minutes to get a green light, or you run over and hit the crosswalk sign, so that you can do that. Shortening cycle length would have big benefits for people who are biking and walking. We could also implement bike-only phases at certain intersections to make it easier to move between on-street lanes and off-street paths. We should also move more quickly to update our street and sidewalk design standards, which are completely car-centric. As a city counselor, I'll advocate for quick, straightforward changes to these design standards while we continue to work on more time-consuming changes. Karen Herbert is one of the folks who's been helping me learn a little more about transportation infrastructure, and she has some incredible ideas about citywide climate campaigns that could get more of us embracing biking, walking, and public transportation as ways to help our city reach its climate goals, especially by building coalitions with non-bike organizations like small businesses. We could go a long way in turning drivers into supporters. Thank you.
Thank you, Nicole. All right, my final question is short and sweet, but I think important. Are you willing, oh, and this is for David and Steve. Are you willing to take street space away from motor vehicles and allocate it toward alternative modes of transportation and other community and neighborhood uses? David?
Yes, I am all over this one. I think about cyclovia, closing a north-south freeway, bicycle, alternate mode freeway, north-south, say, over the Sunday morning, like they do in Columbia. I also take an incremental approach to this. We already have road races, and we have bike races that close parts of the city. So we have the ability to do this and try it out, give the the alternate modes an incentive for getting out, doing some exercise, meeting the community, et cetera, et cetera. So yes, I am so open to the idea of opening up transportation on a human-dominated scale rather than an automobile scale. Yes. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, David. Steve?
Absolutely, yes. In, I think, three important ways. One is a great example of West Broadway, which took street space away from parking in cars and created incredible community resources that is much loved. So we should explore, talk to business owners in other places where we can open that up. Two is in new developments and redevelopments, using what would be parking for multimodal hubs, for electric bike charging, bus stops, all that stuff. You know, what would be a couple of car parking spaces. And then three, potentially most importantly, is we shouldn't be shy about taking some space away from lanes, making lanes smaller, removing lanes to make streets substantially safer for biking. Just takes, just takes the vision, devotion, and political will to do it. So let's get it done.
Thank you.
Sorry, I did all of that while muted. Let me try again. Thanking Martha for joining us. It's always, it's always nice to see you, Martha. Thanks for helping us out this evening. Kristin Weber is our final panelist. She's our second national racing champion of the night. Kristin is the 2018 national champion in women's masters cyclocross. Welcome, Kristin. Thanks for being here.
Thanks. I'm so happy to be here. This really strikes a chord with me, some of my questions, but also just super excited to have this forum to talk about cycling and cycling safety in our community. So I'm so glad for all the people who put this together. So thank you. And I was recently burglarized and had a bike stolen. So this number 16 question going to Dan and Tara is very apropos for me. Okay, so Dan, if you'll answer first, that would be great. Our city parks and open spaces are being used as bicycle chop shops, enabling criminals to easily steal bikes and remove the parts. Many bike thieves are avoiding arrest and prosecution because police aren't able to confiscate bikes and bike parts that they suspect were stolen. What solutions will you propose to apprehend and hold accountable bike thieves, as well as traffickers in stolen bikes and parts, and help the police return stolen property to their owners? Dan?
So Kristin, you're such an incredible athlete. It's an honor really to be here with you. So thank you for doing this. You know, the issue you raise is a really serious one and a really concerning one. My understanding from Police Chief Harold is that the police efforts to make arrests at the sites of these bicycle chop shops has really just met with limited success because they couldn't identify the various bikes as stolen. So what we really need to do to solve this problem is we need some really strong police detective work, and we need to go at this a new way. Chop shops are something we've heard about over the years when it comes to cars. And, you know, now we're seeing like with catalytic converter theft, these things are being stolen because there's a market for them. Bicycle chop shops are apparently a new phenomenon, but it raises the important question, you know, with cars, we know where the car parts are going, and we know there's a market. With bicycle stolen parts, where are these parts going? What's the market for them? And that's what we need Boulder Police Department detectives to figure out. So if these bicycle parts are going to bicycle shops, the owners need to be prosecuted for selling stolen merchandise. If they're going to pawn shops, same thing. We need that stopped, and we need people prosecuted for that. We need to work upstream to eliminate this problem. We need to work aggressively to stop the markets for stolen bike parts. This is a relatively new phenomenon. We really need to nip it in the bud now before it expands because it's completely unacceptable. And, you know, I have a few seconds left. I just want to reiterate what Matt said earlier. We're the second piece of this puzzle. We, as bicyclists, we need to take the measures the police are asking us to do, have secure bike locks, shut our garages and close them, keep them locked, register our bikes. We can help make the difference here, too, by doing our part, but we need some solid police detective work to shut these markets down.
Thanks for your thoughtful comments. And Tara?
Dan, thank you. That was awesome. I'm going to agree with Dan on that and just add a few more points that I would like to make. First of all, you know, people are really upset about the situation, and when I go door to door, everybody brings it up. So I asked our police chief what has been done, what is going to be done. And it's true that they do have two, they have two operations that are working right now, which she said they're going to reveal, so I guess I'm not supposed to reveal them, but they're really making good effect. So I feel like our police department is doubling down on this problem with these two large-scale bike theft operations, and that, according to her, we are seeing really good results. So we'll hear about that soon. And I agree with Dan that bike theft, you know, is a crime of opportunity, and there can be some prevention with U-Locks and documenting our serial numbers in Boulder's index data portal. And also, Michael mentioned, and it's true, that we do have a 35% reduction from last year. However, 35% of a lot is still a lot. I don't do that, but to me, it's a matter of equity. People, plenty of people don't have the money to buy another bike. They just don't. And so, see, to me, it's one of the most important things that I want to accomplish as a city council person is get the number of bike thefts down and to really focus on it. Because if we're going to be a biking culture, and we're going to ask people to get to get out of their cars and onto bikes, people have to feel safe. I will tell you that for me, for me to get back on my bike, and I haven't biked as much as I used to for this very reason, I'm just nervous. I have an e-bike, and it's hard to get another e-bike.
Warning.
So I want to see secure stations in our underground parking garages, secure stations at our shopping centers and shopping strip malls so that we can feel free and comfortable to lock our bikes up and use our bikes more, especially for errands.
Thank you. Thank you so much. This next question goes to Jacques and David. Name three roads or intersections you think should be prioritized for bicycle safety improvements. What would you suggest to improve them? Jacques?
Yeah, couple off the top of my head would be Ninth and Mapleton. I think Michael talked about that earlier, where, you know, there's the hill and you can't really see people coming up the hill or when you're stopped there, so having possibly like a button where you press, and there's like a flashing light down there that says pedestrian or cyclist ahead, something like that would be a good option. All along West Baseline up to Flagstaff can definitely get a narrow, can become a narrow area for cyclists. I think having more warnings and more signs that tell drivers to respect the cyclist and share the road because I feel like it's a highly touristed area as well. So a lot of people might be coming in from out of town not knowing the bike culture of Boulder and might be a little more aggressive towards cyclists. So I think having warnings and signs and telling people to slow down and relax and let the cyclists do their thing would be huge. And another area would be up on 93 and Marshall up there. It's a heavy trafficked area for mountain bikers. There's a lot of car traffic there, too. So just having signs along the way on the north and south side of 93, warning people that it's a highly biked area, advising them to slow down with the traffic light. And then crossing Marshall there from the east to the west side to get to the biking trail over there could have a little yield sign for cars so bikers are able to get across. And also, that road in general up, Marshall is heavily biked as well. So just having more warning signs and more advertisements to share the road would be great.
Thank you. And David?
Yes, I live very near the university. So the three places, I would say, any any unprotected, I mean, not tunneled, entry or exit from the university is a dangerous, an accident waiting to happen. And the reason I say this is we have young people, we have legalized marijuana, and we have time stress. And there have been so many incidents I have been involved with where just totally random things happen. I, long-term, look forward to a AI solution which uses our cell phones, which everybody has, to identify accidents about to happen. Meaning there is activity that is out of normal, i.e., someone is approaching an intersection and speeding up rather than slowing down. You know, the typical, the typical things that lead to accidents. But that's long-term. I think short-term would be a better transparency around where the dangerous intersections are and having signage. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And the last question to Lauren and David again. For more than four decades, Boulder's charter has prevented participation by the Transportation Advisory Board in planning decisions. This prohibition has oftentimes meant that the most experienced voices on transportation solutions are kept separate and distinct from land use decisions. If elected to council, would you support Boulder's transportation advisory boards in having a greater say in land use decisions? Lauren?
Thank you so much for this question. So I've spent the last five years on the city's design advisory board and the last three years as chair. I firmly believe that the best decisions come from collaboration. We have amazing experts and advocates for best practices on our transportation advisory board. Forty years ago, before I was born, was the last time that our charter was updated, and our thinking on urban design and transportation has changed. We've moved away from siloing separate activities within our community, and our city's policies and practices should change as well. I've recently heard that city staff has been reaching out to and getting tabs input on some land use decisions. If elected to council, I would continue this and consider expanding it to have a liaison from TAB on planning board, similar to what planning board has for design advisory board. I would also push for more collaboration from the boards on a variety of projects. We are so lucky as a community to have so many passionate, at least well-informed and often experts in their fields, willing to donate their time and expertise to our community. We need to make sure we are taking full advantage of this gift and make sure we are encouraging these conversations and recommending and listening to the recommendations that they make. Thank you.
Thanks, Lauren. And David?
Yes, for the last year I have been involved with a, a citizen group called Dialogs Boulder. And Dialogue Boulder is looking at ways to reimagine the collaboration between council, boards and commissions, city staff, and of course, the public that all three are serving. And we really are charged with making boards and commissions a more respected entity in our local government and giving them much, much more leeway to do the real work of not only problem solution, but problem definition. And pulling out the stops, letting them collaborate across the, the, the functions and actually start to feel like they are saying what needs to be said and they are actually being listened to. So I would continue the work started with Dialogue Boulder and it is important work and it is, this is what democracy looks like. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, Kristin. And really thank you to all of our panelists tonight, not just for the work that you've done here with us and helping us out this evening, but especially for all the work that you do in your everyday lives to make cycling better in our community, in our region. Thanks for making Boulder a better place to be as a cyclist. I don't know if you're going to come on camera and take a bow, but take a virtual Zoom bow. We really appreciate your help this evening. We will be hearing from the candidates one last time. I will be calling on you in reverse alphabetical order in just a second. But while the candidates are thinking of their one minute closing statements, we want to make sure everyone in attendance is aware of a few resources. So can we move ahead one slide? Great. So first, a few weeks ago, the organizers fielded written answers from all of the Boulder City Council candidates on different questions than the ones we asked tonight, but covering some of the same areas of concern. So their answers have been compiled and there's a link to the scorecard that which is going to be posted, if it's not already, on BMA's website. BMA is also planning to post links to the video recording from tonight. And as I mentioned earlier, they, I believe, will also be posting Mark Wallach's statements that he submitted for us this evening because he knew he couldn't join us live. So I just want you to know that those, those resources will be on the bouldermountainbike.org website at least as early as tomorrow morning. Secondly, we wanted to point you to the Boulder County Elections webpage because it's a great place to get a lot of election questions answered and do things like tracking your ballot if you've already mailed it in, figuring out why you haven't gotten your ballot yet. They should have received it already, but if not, you can go and get one, find out where. You can find out polling locations and times they're open. Also check your voter registration. And just a reminder, if you're not registered to vote, you can continue to do so from now all the way up until voting day, which we do know is one week away. It's Tuesday, November 2nd. So just be aware and we want to make sure that you vote. But if you have other questions, the Boulder County Elections webpage is probably a good place to go. All right, let's back up and hear from our candidates one last time this evening. We're going to start with Tara Wiener. Tara, you will have 60 seconds to wow us.
How exciting. I get to go first. Rarely happens. I moved to Boulder 10 years ago, about 10 years ago with my family. And I've been on a lot of city boards and working groups, so I have a lot of experience. For instance, the Chautauqua Access Management Plan Working Group where we got happening, the Free Park to Park Shuttle and this 2017 Community Culture and Safety Tax Working Group, which was involved in community cycles, getting some capital money for them. And then since last year, I've served on the Boulder Parks and Rec Advisory Board, which has been a fantastic experience. I love that board. I have also run my own business for over 30 years and so I'm a big collab, I collaborate with others to solve problems and I'm a big pragmatist. I know how to go across the aisle and get things done. But one thing is for sure is I'm an expert, but you guys are really the experts. And so I believe that when it comes to questions about bicycling, about cycling, you guys are the ones that we need to hear from to make, help us make.
Thanks, Tara. All right, Dan Williams, you are up.
So tomorrow is my birthday and I spent today reflecting on the last year. And I will tell you, I've been feeling an intense, profound sense of gratitude. Gratitude for this amazing community that we have. Not only for its natural beauty, but to be in a place that has such a love of cycling. Frankly, I'm grateful that during this last year I was able to finish the copper triangle. Thinking about gratitude, I'm also grateful that the Sierra Club has recognized my commitment to addressing the climate emergency this year by endorsing my campaign. I'm grateful that Open Boulder also endorsed my campaign because of my commitment to making open space open and available for all of us to use and enjoy. I'm grateful that labor organizations as well as Boulder progressives endorsed my campaign in light of my commitment to social justice and racial equity and workers' rights. And fundamentally, I'm grateful that my campaign message of making Boulder a place that works for all of us is resonating so well. I'd be grateful for your vote.
Thanks, Dan. Thanks for joining us this evening. David Takahashi, we are ready for you.
Okay, you know, every time I meet with the public and start to hear the stories, I realize what an incredibly rich and deep and diverse voice our public actually holds. And I feel we have given it short shrift in the past and that that has got to stop. And I say that I not only serve you, but I serve the unborn generations that we, whose backs we are covering. And you have my email. I'd love to hear from you no matter what happens. Thank you very much.
Thank you, David. Thanks for joining us tonight. Nicole Spear, 60 seconds for you.
Thank you all so much for organizing this event tonight. And thank you to everybody who gave up their evening to tune in. In the Boulder, I envision we'll make bicycling an easy choice by expanding micro mobility programs, upgrading streets with people-first design, reducing car speeds, building separated bike infrastructure and partnering with our largest employers and healthcare providers to promote e-bikes. When we build protected bike lanes and emphasize safe connections, more people will bike, especially if we're prioritizing the needs of the most vulnerable among us. And when our elders, children, people with disabilities and women, trans and non-binary folks feel comfortable and safe while biking, everyone will follow. There's so much we can do with bikes to move our city forward on transportation, equity and climate goals. Please vote. It's too late to mail your ballot, so make sure you drop it off at a secure drop box by 7:00 PM on November 2nd. And thank you again for hosting us tonight.
Terrific. Thank you, Nicole. All right, Steve Rosenbloom, you are up. 60 seconds for your final statement, please.
Thank you. And thank you for your specific detailed questions on how we as candidates, when we're on council, will, will vote on these hard issues and how we're going to pay for them. So so often the, the campaign time is a, is a chance to people to say bold ideas and express their priorities. Only a year later for the community to just be disappointed on the lack of progress and, and wonder what's going on. So I think it's important for, for folks to, to say specifically what they would do and how they would pay for it because we hear during the campaign, a lot of empty promises that when the rubber meets the road on council, people aren't able to deliver on. That's because I often think we, we, when people get on council and realize that money doesn't grow on trees and you actually have to work with other people, work with experts to deliver both your expertise and your experience and your prioritization to move what's important for the city forward. So I look forward to doing it. I want to get to council, looking forward to working with all, all of you, all the boards and the community to make real progress over the next two years. Thank you.
Great. Thanks, Steve. Lauren Folkerts, we'd love to hear from you next.
Thank you so much for having us. This has been a great forum. I just wanted to quickly say the wording on the scorecard was a little particular. I'm not sure it's a great representation of my thinking. So if you have any questions, please reach out. I just put my email address in the chat. So I'm Lauren Folkerts and I'm an architect. I'm also chair of the city's design advisory board, president-elect of the Colorado Green Building Guild. I run the Boulder Green Home Tour and I'm also a bike commuter. I'm passionate about improving Boulder through collaboration and the celebration of community. And I didn't become an architect because I love buildings, but because I care about the impact they can have on people's lives. They impact us psychologically and can improve our connections to each other. Buildings and urban design also have a huge impact on our environment. They're our largest sources of greenhouse gas emissions. And I'm running for city council for many of the same reasons that I became an architect. Our affordable housing crisis and our climate crisis. As an architect and sustainable design specialist, I'm the candidate most qualified to address these issues. I understand the constraints and opportunities from both a policy level and a practical level, and I look forward to using the skills I've gained living and working in Boulder as an architect for the past 10 years to implement creative solutions. Thank you.
Thanks, Lauren. Jacques De Calo, you are up next. 60 seconds for your final statement, please.
Thank you. One thing I'd like to touch on that no one else touched on is the energy that's being used to power our electric bikes. It's still 70% fossil fuels. So we have to work to flip the grid completely across the city. That's why I've decided to run for Boulder City Council. As a Boulder native, I was born and raised here, went to school at Western Washington University where I studied hemp policy and sustainability, understanding implementations of sustainable crops and bringing them to the American market. And then through the last year of COVID, I was sitting around thinking of ideas and realized that Boulder is not as sustainable as it claims to be. So if elected, I promise to make Boulder one of the most sustainable cities in the world and if not the most sustainable city in America by implementing gray water recycling, implementing battery storage technology, solar community gardens paid for by XL because we've given them our power and working forward to making Boulder a very bicycle-friendly community. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Jacques. Michael Christie, you are up next. We'd love to hear your closing statement now, please.
Thank you, Tealyn. Thank you to all the panelists. I too am running for Boulder City Council, obviously. I am an age grouper triathlete, so I say that humbly in front of this crowd. I'm an iron man and a mountain biker. So I'm very sensitive to the concerns of our cycling community. I am running because I believe that I have the character, the leadership ability, the core values and unique skillset to be an active and effective voice at the table and moving our city in a positive direction. I'm a family law lawyer by trade. I'm a certified mediator and a certified collaborative law lawyer. I have deep roots in public service. I was a JAG officer in the United States Air Force and deployed to Kuwait and Afghanistan after 9/11. I was an intern at the White House during the Clinton administration. I'm a volunteer at the Boulder Shelter for the Homeless. I'm a volunteer with Boulder's Community Mediation and Resolution Center. And I currently sit on Boulder's Cannabis Licensing and Advisory Board. My hope is to bring my skillset, particularly as a mediator, to bring people together who have very opposing viewpoints, help them find some common ground, encompass some reasonable solutions. I'm not sitting here pretending that I have all the answers to the challenges we're facing, but I do believe that I will add value to the conversations around those challenges.
That's great, Michael. Thank you. All right, Matt Benjamin. I put you last because you complained earlier. You're always first.
Well, thanks, Tealyn. So I've lived in Boulder for over 20 years and I currently live in South Boulder with my wife and two kids. I'm a professional photographer and I do science education consulting after about 15 years of teaching astronomy at the University of Colorado. I've been endorsed by the Daily Camera, Boulder Weekly, Yellow Scene Magazine and the Sierra Club and many more. It's worth noting, I was the first candidate to host the Wednesday Morning VLO back in September. I will lead with my values of empathy, equity and honesty. If COVID has taught us anything, it's that we should strengthen our community. I hope some will cease and desist with the fear mongering and polarization. Residents need us to invest in our values and grow a community that welcomes all. My priorities will be housing, transportation, homelessness and rejuvenating our economy. All of these vital issues need to be seen through the lens of climate resiliency and equity. I'm Matt Benjamin and I am number four on the ballot. So remember, Matt for Boulder. Have a good night.
Thank you so much to the candidates and to our panelists. On behalf of the Boulder Mountain Bike Alliance, Community Cycles and Cyclists for Community, I am so glad that you were here, able to join us for the first ever cycling forum for the Boulder City Council candidates. Again, links and materials to the, related to the presentation and the Zoom session tonight will be posted on BMA's website tomorrow. So if you know of friends and voters who want to know more about these candidates' positions on cycling-related issues, please point them to those links, have them watch and most importantly, do not forget to vote. You can vote in person or turn in your ballot anytime between now and 7:00 PM on November 2nd. Thanks so much, everyone. Have a good night.
Thank you.